Call the meeting to order. Roll call of department heads, Republican and hold them.
Hi, sir. Consilom, Holt, Schmidt, Ridgewood, Randall, Anthony, Davidson, Silsby, Hayden, Cybert, White, Galetti, Musgrove, Orland, Schneider.
Alderman, Randall is excused. Roll call of department heads.
Police Chief Clay. Fire Chief Tom Moore. City Attorney, Airborne. Ken Vaughn. Royce Carlisle. Jim Matron. Tim Grandwoods. Jim Schneider. Leander Spearman. Emily Foltz. Chuck Schaefer. Bob Sabo. And Debbie Bell.
Ladies and gentlemen, if you would, please stand and join me in a pleasure meeting.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, good evening. We have no public hearing this evening. Before I open public participation, I want to thank Alderman Silsby for filling in for me two weeks ago. I haven't been to many council meetings, but due to the death and the lungs of other reader visitation, so I do appreciate everybody's cooperation and your thoughts. Also today, in case you hadn't heard, Jerry Turner served the city sixteen years as alderman and as city treasurer, about eight and eight. And they had the funeral today for his daughter, in case you didn't see it. He lost a son about eighteen months ago, and today his daughter was buried. I just wanted to keep those folks in your thoughts, because it's, I can't fathom losing a child, the two of them in an eighteen-month period is a tough, tough thing. But he served the city for a long time. I know many of you know him, and might not have caught it in the paper when names are, if married names come, you'll sometimes catch that. So, I pass that on to you. This time I will open public participation. If anyone would like to address the city council this evening, please wait till I recognize you, and then step up to the microphone, get your name and address. Try to keep it to two to three minutes, and we will be getting out. And the lady in the back there with her hand up.
Good evening. My name is Patty Law, and I live at 221 East Main. I also have a business, a hair salon, in the same building. I have to say one thing first, Saturday night after the St. Patrick's Day deal. My sister, my daughter and my sister-in-law were leaving, and my daughter, my sister-in-law just moved here, but not even a year ago, this was our first St. Patrick's Day deal. And she said, "Oh, my gosh, it's gonna take them a month at some point to clean up this mess." And my daughter said, "I'll tell you two things about Bellevue. She doesn't even live in Bellevue." She said, "They know how to throw a party, and they know how to clean up." She said, "I guarantee you, before you get up to go to church tomorrow morning, it'll be immaculate, and it will us." I can vouch for that, I was up to buying listening to them. Second of all, speaking about the city and this town, the town, your downtown is a heart of your city. And we got a good thing going. And I am here tonight to speak in favor of the lights. I think it's just the icing on the cake. I think it will totally set our town apart. First of all, there's no other towns anywhere near us that have a downtown like ours. And if you want to see anything with lights, you'd have to go to St. Louis. And you're only gonna see three blocks of them. Or we're offering seven. And it would be four on the east side, and three on the west end, which is finally gonna bring some light to the west end. I think it will be such a festive mood. I've talked to a lot of the customers in the beauty shop, the old and the young, and they're all excited about it, they just think it's a very unique, different idea, they think it's gonna bring a crowd down, because it's so, anytime there's lights, people are coming, that's just the way it is. And when their heart of that body is strong, then it's gonna feed out the rest of it. So more money spent downtown is gonna be more revenue for the rest of the town.
Michael Hager, 71 Centerville Ave., speaking against the lights. If you'd like to get more lighting downtown, the first thing I would recommend is that you replace the burned-out bulbs that are downtown. Just a quick walk, we noticed that there were nine burned-out bulbs and three flickering bulbs downtown. It might be a little ironic or a little sad, but one of them is right in front of Jerry Boyer's building. I followed this through committees, and Downtown Development, it was referenced that these bulbs have a twenty-year life expectancy. During the Finance Committee, it was said that these bulbs have a twenty-year warranty. Warranty would imply that the bulbs are replaced free of charge for the first twenty years. A life expectancy implies that all the bulbs were burned out within twenty years and have to be replaced at taxpayer's expense. There are 4,360 bulbs that are being installed downtown.
Yes, sir. Let's go in the back first.
North Atlanta, 318 South 29th Street, Bellevue. About the lights, it's really dark down here now, so I don't know what a few more light bulbs are gonna do. I hear they're not bright right anyway. And even after dark, there's very few businesses open anyway, and I don't think people are just gonna drive down Main Street just to look for lights if all the businesses are closed. Only businesses that open are a few taverns, I believe, and maybe a theater. But what I wanted to talk about is, it took them all to figure it out, but the reason I think we got all these aldermen and county board members that are nothing but a bunch of yes-men, is because they all got, most of them got either themselves or relatives or got jobs for the county and the city. And if they don't want, if they don't pull it off and enjoy the rights, like you said, they say, "Look, they're gonna be looking for a new job on either ass or something." So that's why we get such things as being a million dollars for a hundred fifty thousand dollar park, and other wild spending sprees that defy common sense. And also now, here we give Lindenwood property, our Bellevue taxpayer property away, to Lindenwood, solely free of charge. And Lindenwood has spent millions and millions all over Bellevue, buying up lots and building dormitories, yet they can't pay Bellevue, who seems to be always broke, a few thousand dollars for this, about an acre of ground that could be used for something other than a parking lot. Naturally, Lindenwood made a parking lot out of it, like you do by everything else. So I just think, I don't even know if that's legal for Bellevue to give away taxpayer property. Thank you.
Thanks, gentlemen. Yes, sir.
Hello. My name's Scott Schmogel, I live in Bellevue. I own Big Daddy 618 Downtown. I'm here to talk about the lighting situation. I didn't know much about it till a week ago, and sir, for your information, you might count burnt-out lights, but you just can't change, those aren't like house light bulbs you can just change, there's building involved, it's not easy to change it. You have to wait till there are a series of lights burned out before you can change them. So every once in a while, you will experience lights being burnt out, just so you know. Big fan of the lights. It will create a business district from the east side of Main Street and the west side of Main Street. People gravitate to lights. I'm in the business where lighting counts. Places such as Washington Street, when you go down to Washington Street in St. Louis, it was not like it is now recently. As soon as you hit Washington Street, you see lights. People come to lights. It will be a capital improvement without a high price tag that will increase revenues for, someone mentioned, a lot of businesses are not open late in the evening. Around the holidays, there are increased hours. The restaurants, bars, we'll see an increased revenue, we will employ a few more people, there will be more tax dollars. The lighting thing makes sense for the district, in my opinion. And that's really all I have to say about it. I'm just a big fan of lights. I know people don't buy into it. No matter what you do to promote the city, whether you spend twenty-five thousand dollars on a media blitz, or going newspapers, people will see lights. Ads don't last forever. Media campaigns don't last forever. These lights, everybody will see it, they will talk about it, they will come down to look at it. There's no way around it. When you see the way of lights at the snows, people go to lights. Vegas, they go to lights. People will spend money, it will increase revenue, employ more people, bring more tax dollars, and I really feel like that. If anybody has any questions for me, I'm always open. Thank you.
Anyone else this evening? Yes, sir.
My name is Jim LaPlance, I live at 1300 East Bell Avenue, directly across from the sanitary sewer overfill project that's gonna be talked about a little later. The tank that is going to be installed, the store, the sanitary sewer, is going to be directly across from my living room window. I'll be looking directly at it. It'll set a few feet higher than first floor of my house. Currently, there are a lot of sewer problems over in that area, sewer backing up. With this project, there's going to be additional sewage pumped into the neighborhood. The manholes will be lower than the storage tank, so when there is a failure from the pump station, all of that sewage will run basically through my property. I looked at a little bit of information online with what other cities have done with these kind of projects. Other cities have been doing underground storage tanks, where they don't have a lift station to get the sewage into the tank. Also, they are involving the residents, or importing to the design of the storage tank, and none of that has happened in our area. The tank, being forty-eight feet tall, basically four stories tall in a residential neighborhood, will be the tallest structure around. Think it'll be a high sore, and we'll pack the property values in the neighborhood. I don't think this project should go ahead until there's some more public discussion.
Anybody else this evening? Hearing that, I'm a close public participator. We'll answer a few of these questions as we get to that item on the agenda, okay? At this time, under free recognitions and appointments, I ask for a motion to appoint, reappoint August E. Werner Jr. to serve a three-year term on the fire pension board for his American appointment. Motion by Eric Cybert, second by Alderman Heisler. Discussion, roll call.
Heisler. Aye. Consilom. Aye. Holt. Schmidt. Ridgewood. Anthony. Aye. Davidson. Aye. Silsby. Aye. Hayden. Aye. Cybert. Aye. White. Aye. Galetti. Aye. Musgrove. Aye. Orland. Aye. Schneider. Aye.
Motion carries. Housing Report of Cash Receives Fiscal Year 2013-14. I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I've jumped out. It's bifocals. Reading of the minutes. We have a motion.
Yes, Your Honor, I'd like to make a motion to receive and file the March 3, 2014, Regent of City Council meeting minutes, so moved to your honor.
Motion by Alderman Heisler, second by Alderman Schmidt. Discussion on the minutes? All in favor of accepting and filing, signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Claims, payroll, and dispersals.
Yes, Your Honor, I'd like to make a motion, claims, payroll, and dispersals, so moved to your honor.
Motion by Alderman Heisler, here second. Second by Alderman Schmidt, do I hear discussion? Roll call.
Heisler. Aye. Consilom. Aye. Holt. Aye. Schmidt. Aye. Ridgewood. Aye. Anthony. Aye. Davidson. Aye. Silsby. Aye. Hayden. Aye. Cybert. Aye. White. Aye. Galetti. Aye. Musgrove. Aye. Orland. Aye. Schneider. Aye.
Motion carries. Now we'll try the housing report of cash receipts for fiscal year 2013-14. What's your pleasure? Motion to accept and file by Alderman Consilom, second by Alderman Schmidt. Do you question Alderman? Okay. We have a motion, we have a second, we have discussion. All in favor of accepting and filing, signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carries. We go to Treasurers' Report. City available funds and statement of cash and investments for February 2014. What's your pleasure in that? Motion, Alderman Schmidt, to approve, accept? Do I hear a second?
Second, Your Honor.
Second by Alderman Heisler. Do I hear any discussion? All in favor of accepting the Treasurers' reporting, filing for audit, signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Zoning Board of Appeals Advisory Reports.
February 6, 2014, Henry Rowetter, requesting a special use permit in order to construct a forty-two-by-forty-five-foot metal addition onto an existing structure at 5825 West State Route 161, located in C2 Heavy Commercial zoning district.
Do I hear a motion for this? Motion. Motion by Alderman Davidson, second by Alderman Anthony. Any discussion? All in favor to approve this recommendation from the zoning board, we have the proper ardent drawn, signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Number two, February 7, 2014, Todd Kennedy Main Street Brewing Company, requesting a special use permit for a liquor license of forty-two oh four West Main Street, located in a C2 Heavy Commercial zoning district.
Do I hear a motion? Motion by Alderman Ridgewood, second by Alderman Galetti. Any discussion? All in favor approving Todd Kennedy's Main Street Brewing Company, as recommended by the zoning board, signify by saying aye, and have the proper ardent drawn. Close? Motion carries.
Number three, case number eight, February 14, or February 2014, Hartman Enterprises Incorporated Main Street Market, requesting a special use permit for a liquor license at 8193 West Main Street, located in a C2 Heavy Commercial zoning district.
We comply with the movement of zoning board.
Okay, motion by Alderman Anthony, second by Alderman Davidson, to comply with the zoning board's request and have the proper ardent drawn. Yes, ma'am.
There were some questions part of the zoning about where this property is and in the inspection process.
It's having some improvements that the previous owners have agreed to plan with stipulations to have all the work done, and I would say it's probably according to Bobby getting close to halfway done.
Correct, April 6, they're supposed to be closing to finish.
Okay, we're monitoring it, and it's part of the stipulations of that. Alderman?
Yes, there's two objectors, Your Honor. Can you bank with their concern?
There was only one. I only.
It's less than two on there.
Yeah, I'm looking. I can't tell you exactly off the top of my head right now, but I know there were a lot of questions that night related to the business occupancy permit, which we, you know, advise the zoning board that should not be part of their consideration for this request for a liquor license.
Alderman Anthony?
Mayor, we had two gentlemen there that were objectors, actually those were previous employees of Main Street Market. And basically, that was their complaint, that after the gentleman had got into business there, I think he was there a week or so, and he actually let those two guys go. And, you know, I talked with those guys, and that was their complaint. You know, it wasn't, it wasn't about the business actually.
They're not living in the neighborhood there.
No. No, not.
I feel with the zoning with a different understanding, that there were people who were questioning the percentage of alcohol that was going to be charged, was gonna change from a grocery store with a little bit of alcohol.
Those were all, they were asked, the question was asked, but I think his reply to the question was that he would sell the same amount that the, that the previous owner sold.
But there were questions about the coast, the building itself, not the right, but the mayor and housing taking up over footage under a timetable for that to be done. That was really the main objection to the coast. I was, I was the same.
And I personally, when I talked to the family, it is a family, and of course, we bring a family in to occupy some of the slots, so it's like anything, if you buy a business for your family, you may not need everybody who was there, and that's understandable. But they assured us, so your attorney and I both talked to him, when we did the application of that with the liquor license, that he's going to operate the same way as he has in the past. And, you know, I think that there was a lot of rumors flying, but they were rumors.
Are there restrictions on this particular type of liquor license that would limit percentage sales?
No, we're looking, no, we're looking right now at a couple of the things with liquor in the future, to possibly consider going to ardent. But his liquor license is no different than the liquor license was for thirty years at that location. Same scenario. And why not be the same? I mean, it was working for the other folks, those other two owners for, I think we look back at since, they've had since eighty-four in this particular two. So it's been a long time, number of years, over almost thirty years. Any other questions? We have a motion, we have a second, to approve this case number, there's a case number, a case number, it's an ardent's number when it comes up for ardent's, but it's a reference to Main Street Market, approving it from the zoning board, have the proper ardent's drawn. We have that motion, and we have a second. Any further discussion? All in favor of this motion to have the proper ardent's drawn, approve this, signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carries. We'll vote on the ardent's a little bit later in the meeting, okay?
Number four, case number nine, February 14, Tenley Spoon, requesting a use variance in order to operate a wellness studio to include yoga classes, personal coaching, specialized personal training, and nutritional coaching at 138 North Michigan, located in the A1 Single Family zoning district.
Your Honor, I'd like to make a motion to comply with the recommendation of the zoning board, have the proper ardent's drawn.
Motion by Alderman Heisler, second by Alderman Consilom, that ward. Any discussions? Yes, ma'am.
I was at the zoning meeting, was there any objections, or was there any conversations?
No.
They talked a little bit, she talked about having classes for small children, and they asked if there were going to be playgrounds in that, but that was not what she was aiming at all.
And parking, will they be all parking on B Street, or in that lot?
They come to a parking lot.
And we can't stop in some parks on B Street. That's not different than another.
I would think the usage wouldn't be any more than when it was a church.
No, I mean, it was a church for years.
But that was one day out of the week that the parking was so full there along B Street. Now, this is gonna be, are there?
We have parking on both sides of the street. And they have one.
So there's no problem.
And it's not an issue.
The reason I'm asking is because when the lady went and put the massage therapy in the house, and it was only gonna be one car in the residential area, where now this is gonna be a lot of cars in the residential area.
I think the thing, you gotta go back and compare, you gotta compare apples to apples. This was constructed as a business, many, many years ago, it's always been a business or a church. And it has a parking lot. The other scenario I'm making mention too, was a home. It was constructed as a home, and didn't have a big parking lot, and that's the difference. Am I right, Emily? Okay, we have a motion, we have a second, to approve this ardent's, this recommendation from the ardent's committee, and have the proper ardent's drawn. All in favor of this, signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Number five, case number ten, February 14, Constitution Incorporated Penn Station, requesting assigned variance in order to place two identical projecting neon signs, with one being placed on the side of the building and the other placed on the front. Both sixty-four square foot feet each, and one on in total of fourteen point five square feet at 651 Carlisle Avenue, Suite H, located in a C2 Heavy Commercial zoning district.
Motion for approval, Alderman Galetti, second by Alderman Schneider. Any discussion on this one? All in favor of this motion, recommendation by the zoning board, have the proper ardent's drawn, signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carries. You move on. Oral reports, Alderman Heisler.
Yes, Your Honor, on behalf of the Massachusetts City, I'd like to make the motion to approve the bid for East Watership SSO relief improvement to air plumbing in the amount of $2,224,416, so, Your Honor.
We have a motion by Alderman Heisler, we have a second by Alderman Schmidt. Royce is our, I think you wanna make a couple of comments here to answer a few of that gentleman's questions. Let me just start off while they're heading to the microphone. As you know, this was not something that we went out to add to our list of things to do, that we didn't have enough already with sewers. But the state of Illinois EPA mandated that we take this action. And I understand, sewage does not belong in the ditches, and it's the right thing to do. This came as an extra bonus to everything else we've been doing throughout the city, and as you can see, it's an extra two point, almost two and a quarter million dollars additional. We, we did have a public meeting with the EPA here, sir, and you may not have seen it, but it was advertised, the actual director of the Illinois EPA came down in this room. There was a number of people from here into town that came, and she that day said that this project, you know, something of this nature would have to be done. There was no, there was no if answer, but it wasn't negotiable, we just had to, they had to approve the engineering. I will tell you that it is my intent that we do everything we can to get the trees and shrubbery out around there to make it as palatable. But we did, as you can see, or you probably heard, we tried to put it on city property that didn't cost the taxpayers anymore. It's on the property that used to be the trailer court at one time, that we now hold. And it's, I'm not saying it's gonna be perfect for a hundred percent everyone, but we really did, as they designed it, try to come up with a place that would work, and not be negatively impacting as we could minimize it as possible. So, guys, what do you want to add to this?
Mayor, I'm introduced. Scott Knight, from Crawford, Murphy, and Tilly.
Okay, and he engineered this particular project.
I would like to make one comment. We did look at things that could interfere with the aesthetics of the neighborhood. One of them was a tank that tall on that piece of property. We tried to look at all avenues on how to do that, whether burying a tank or whatever. So I'm gonna let Scott explain some of the reasons why we decided to do it above ground time.
Go ahead, Scott.
Okay, thanks. I just want to address a couple of comments. As you mentioned with the site, one of the things about that particular site is that property, that building property is already slated for stormwater retention in the future, so it's already planned for some sort of a public improvement there. The site that we had to have, had to be very close to the existing overflow of Bellemusinda, this is within about six hundred feet of that. So, it's an ideal location. It is city-owned, so no property acquisition was required. Adjacent to a recycling center, so there's some consistency with land use there. It is mostly blocked from view on East Bell by the existing tree line, not so much in the winter months, but during the summer, there's large trees that will block most of the view for that proposed tank. There are some residences to the north that, there is not a solid tree line there, but there are several trees, and other residences are three hundred to five hundred feet away. So, between the distance and the trees that are there, that's gonna partially obstruct the view of the tank. And so, we felt like that site, given its location, its future intended use, and there is some obstruction there with trees. was very well suited for the intended purpose, primarily because of this location with respect to the overflow that we're trying to eliminate. With regard to a buried tank, we looked at, uh, the current tank's cost is about seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. If we were to bury a concrete tank, if the cast-in-place concrete, the excavation, all the, the other ancillary equipment that goes with it, with no top on it, would be about one and a half million dollars. And if we were to cover that for aesthetics and order control, it would be about two and a half million dollars. Plus, there's some ancillary pumping facilities that have to keep the groundwater from putting hydrostatic pressure on that tank, so a buried tank would be quite a bit more expensive.
So that's additional to the total project?
That's a, that's a, I'm comparing the cost of our current tank to what would it be to take and bury that tank. And so it's about two times the cost for a buried tank without top, and about three times the cost for a buried tank covered up.
But I don't think we dare wanna have one without a top.
No, I, I think that would introduce odor issues.
Well, odor's been most safety, I think, as well.
Yes. So, and then there was a comment about pump station, we had to go through with the Illinois EPA permit, so we have a lot of redundancy with pump station, we have backup generators, we have backup pumps, we have emergency overflow. So those provisions that were required to obtain that permit are gonna ensure that, uh, there won't be any, any flow going across the ground or through anybody's property. So, I just, with that, I don't know if there's any other questions?
Do any of the council members have, uh, Mike?
Yes, uh, meeting last week, I think it was brought up about Shield Street adjacent to the Federal Lane, that is considered flood plain, correct? That's why that site, we couldn't go with that site?
Um, I don't know about that, that gets a little bit further away from the meeting.
I think the big question there, Mike, was too far away to make it work.
We have to stay close to where the, um...
Actual problem.
Yeah, because we're releasing that gravity gravity, you know, and if the middle is low, we can't get too far away before we're getting too deep in the ground, so.
Alderman Hayden?
Yes, your honor, um, also at the Master Sewer Committee meeting, we discussed, and I, I particularly discussed and, and complimented, uh, former Alderman, former chairman, now Rob Anderson, I complimented, uh, Royce Carlisle, Randy Smith, and our staff. Uh, with those out in the public, uh, that are aware, I, I've been a long advocate of, of request for qualifications. I, I know they're different than RFP, but, excuse me, I do believe that it brings a competitive process to, to the project. The committee at the time established a subcommittee, went through a full RFQ process. We looked at this gentleman's firm and three other firms. All four firms brought in basically a, a gravity flow, uh, design that, uh, would work. This was the only firm that brought in this tank concept, and for those that wanna see, you know, a similar system, if you go by, uh, Lambert Airport, if you look to the right, you're gonna see this big giant, uh, thing that I forget what they designed it to look like, but you wouldn't even, it looks like a building, but it's a tank. So there is some options there to be, possibly, and I hope you look at every option and try to appease the gentleman. But the key point is that this process at this juncture, based on the numbers that we looked at, is, is conceivably gonna save the taxpayers, and I think you're aware of here, two, two point five to three million dollars, and that, that's a lot of money, not to mention the time and the project, the EPA down on us, trying to get right away acquisition, and certainly don't wanna disturb this gentleman, but I can't even imagine how many yards that we would be going through if we did gravity flow projects. So, I, I, I think I, I just wanna give a little history of why we ended up with this here.
I agree. One, like I said, we, uh, from the beginning, my conversation with Royce and staff was, if there's a way we can use already city-owned property, it's gonna cut the time down drastically and you don't have to negotiate buying, acquisitions, and all those things. So that's a big, that was a big part of us, my initial marching argument was to look at where we could possibly put it on our property. Yes, ma'am?
Um, yes, when we had the meeting last Wednesday night, I think we had a very good turnout. There was lots and lots of questions answered, excuse me, asked and answered. And there were so many people that this project has either had something bad happen, the alcohol rain and everything, and now with this tank and that, but I'm hoping that everybody will all be able to get this project going because some of the people that lost some of their main valuables, um, the one lady that was there, Royce, I can't remember who it was, we were at her house last spring when the, um, you were there, mayor?
I was there. Lost her mother's pictures and lost stuff.
She lost her mother's stuff, and they've not recovered from it yet. So this project has been really, a project that's been needing to be done, and I just hope that when it is done, that everybody will be happy and that the main problem of the sewerage that was coming up in these people's homes up out of their toilets, out of their bathroom sinks. It was, it was just devastating to her a lot, and I understand, gentlemen, I know where he lives, and then there's another neighbor that we're facing because the other three houses is the, the tank is behind him, am I correct? So I'm just hoping this all works out.
Mike?
Yeah, uh, key, thank you, Lily. Key thing brought up, Randy Smith, assistant plant director, will be out on the project every day. So if there are any issues, you know, we've got somebody from Royce's office right out there, and Randy's so qualified, you know, he's Royce's equal, and he'll be out there day to day on the project, if there are any issues or whatever. He'll, he'll be there firsthand to address them, so that, so that there's any reassurance to all the neighbors.
So I, I think to the council tonight, my comment is, as much as I respect this gentleman's opinion, and I hate that we can't make everyone happy or complete on this, there has been a lot of research looked into this. It has been studied, the EPA has not given us a choice. This is the site and the plan that they approved. Uh, believe me, we, we looked at other options first, but this is what they want. And, uh, it is on city property, it will be, uh, it will meet all their criteria, and it will be cheaper than had we, um, been forced to take it to another location and negotiate. Uh, and it still would be a situation, anywhere else, uh, other than that site, probably would still be aesthetically accepted by many. So it's, and that part's gonna be a challenge, but for the sake of stopping loss sewage, uh, in that neighborhood, we need, we need to do this project. Yes, ma'am?
There was a mention that it may affect home values. Um, it's hard to measure that, but I can tell you that if we don't do this, the neighborhood will have, uh, a reputation for sewer flooding and whole values will plummet.
No, it's, no, it's, it's one of those situations, you're a hundred percent right, I think the value will be a lot worse. And, and we are going to do whatever we can to try to make this aesthetically, but, uh, I raised the questions about underground, but the cost is, and some issues with that, and, uh, I, I think that we gotta go with what the EPA has approved. So I ask you now, and we, we have a vote, is there any question for the engineer or Royce?
Oh, we, we just, we planned on talking about this and that, sort of what we can do there.
Okay.
As far as trees to, you know, help with that, why, so.
Okay.
We talked about that, that night, um, Royce is gonna have a reporter involved in it, of everything that was said, that somebody wants to review it, I'm quite sure they can come to his office and... It's just a project that needs to be...
We have a motion, who make a motion? Heisler, who make a second? Hayden, we have a motion, we have a second, to approve this item for the two million, two twenty-four, four sixteen. There's no further questions, roll call. Heisler.
Aye.
Consillo.
Aye.
Holt.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Ridgewood.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Davidson.
Aye.
Silsby.
Aye.
Hayden.
Aye.
Cybert.
Aye.
White. Glennie.
Aye.
Orland.
Aye.
Snyder.
Aye.
Snyder.
Aye.
Motion carries. Alderman Heisler.
Yes, your honor, on behalf of the Master Sewer Committee, I'd like to make a motion to enter into an agreement with Payment Service Network Incorporated, so moved, your honor.
Motion by Alderman Heisler, second by Alderman Hayden, do I hear discussion? Roll call. Heisler.
Aye.
Consillo.
Aye.
Holt.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Ridgewood.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Davidson.
Aye.
Silsby.
Aye.
Hayden.
Aye.
Cybert.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Glennie.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Orland.
Aye.
Snyder.
Aye. Mayor, could you, may I?
Motion carries, yes, ma'am?
One more thing about the question. Um, we're going, when we have the suggestions to help take care of this, we have a list of the address and names of people that were there. I think it would be helpful if we would send them a notice and say we're gonna be discussing this at Master Sewer, if you're exposed and you come, so that they know about the meetings and it, they'll know what will be...
If you've got the list, I just give them the information, email it to them, or whatever you can do, or share it, I wouldn't...
Well, that's what I'm saying, I mean, to show that we're trying to be open and helpful.
I, I would agree with you a hundred percent.
Thank you.
Okay. This time, I'd ask for a motion to allow the city to enter into a license agreement with the C-N railroad to allow a fifty point five seven inch PVC sewer pipe in a sixty-six inch steel casing be installed for a fee of twelve thousand, two hundred dollars. And this is pertaining to the sewer also, Royce, this is, this is a sewer wastewater request, right?
This is for thing three.
Oh, the CSO.
Yeah, it's probably located down behind the, uh...
St. Elizabeth's?
St. Elizabeth's, uh...
And then this is just their normal fee to, uh, when you do these types of borings and grillings, uh, with dealing with the... Have a motion? Motion by Alderman Schmidt, you make the second? Second by Alderman Heisler, now hear the discussion. Yes, ma'am?
I think it's good that we're doing this because what we learned with the railroad on Seventeenth Street, how time was, delayed a lot of stuff in that, I think we need to get this going.
I agree. Royce, one more, watch out. Uh, roll call. Heisler.
Aye.
Consillo.
Aye.
Holt.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Ridgewood.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Davidson.
Aye.
Silsby.
Aye.
Hayden.
Aye.
Cybert.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Glennie.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Orland.
Aye.
Snyder.
Aye.
Motion carries. Alderman Silsby.
Your honor, on behalf of the Finance Committee, I'd like to make a motion to approve your agreement with Abazar Audit Solutions to Perform Revenue Audit, so moved.
Motion by Alderman Silsby, second by Alderman Cybert, any discussion? Roll call. Heisler.
Aye.
Consillo.
Aye.
Holt.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Ridgewood.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Davidson.
Aye.
Silsby.
Aye.
Hayden.
Aye.
Cybert.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Glennie.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Orland.
Aye.
Snyder.
Aye.
Motion carries. I'd ask for a motion to approve the low bidder of H. Edwards Equipment for purchase of a street department backhoe for the net cost after trade of seventy-one thousand, two hundred.
So moved, your honor.
Motion by Alderman, uh, Cybert, second by Alderman Silsby. Discussion. Roll call. Heisler.
Aye.
Consillo.
Aye.
Holt.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Ridgewood.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Davidson.
Aye.
Silsby.
Aye.
Hayden.
Aye.
Cybert.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Glennie.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Orland.
Aye.
Snyder.
Aye.
Motion carries. I'd ask for a motion to approve the purchase of additional lighting in downtown special service area and move forward with ordering the lights upon council approval. Uh, this request is explained in your packet that, uh, as you might know, by what make it clear to any visitors here, uh, twelve thousand, five hundred was pledged by Main Street, twelve thousand, five hundred was pledged by, uh, Downtown Redevelopment, and, uh, we're asking in this motion, as you read in your packet, for twenty-five thousand dollars to be, uh, paid out of tip two. Motion by Alderman Schmidt, second by Alderman Consillo. Discussion, Alderman Hayden.
First thing, uh, there is nothing in the packet. The only thing in the packet is this demo. There's nothing in the, in the packet that states, uh, how much, uh, we spent, at least not in my packet.
Does it, does it say in the memo that it's...
And I don't, I don't think Mr. Silsby found it either, so I just wanted to know that.
Okay, but it was explained in finance, I guess we, uh, maybe I don't know what happened in finance. It's total cost of fifty thousand. Total of twenty-five being paid and shared by the two groups I mentioned, Belvo Main Street and Downtown Redevelopment. And the proposal passed at finance, I believe it was six to two, sent to council, um, was to pay the remainder twenty-five thousand out of tip two.
Your honor, I, this, this is a great and, and exciting and noble idea. The problem is, we are at a time where we, as elected officials, have to start prioritizing our needs. This is twenty-five thousand that we could use towards the new police station. We spent money, I know it's in tip two, but if we can move money from tip three to every other tip, we can move money from tip two to tip three. Your honor, we have to start prioritizing the needs of the people. And we're talking about a three point one million dollar expenditure for the new police station, which I told you and I voted for and I supported. But now we're getting into the situation of also the questions of how are we going to afford to, to renovate this? And when you start adding up these monies that we are spending in, in other places, this is money that, that I, that I voted against at the program rule, and I wish we had that two hundred thousand back because this is money we could also be putting towards the three point one million dollar, the cut down on the amount of the loan and the interest of the loan and, and the long-term, uh, payment of the loan. Because my concern is that we're not gonna have enough money to, uh, appropriately buy this building and appropriately renovate it without putting another form of, of, of tax on the public. And the people are, they're, they're taxed out. Um, this is money that could be going towards fixing the streets. Now, I've not seen anything on this, I'm no longer on the Finance Committee, um, there's nothing in the packet. The, the rumor was this was supposed to be a gift from these two, uh, groups to City of Belvo for their two hundred birthday, you know, is that true?
That was the intent, yeah.
Okay, I, I'm, I'm not familiar with getting a gift where I gotta pay fifty percent of the gift, you know, this, this is...
It was a way to, uh, it was a way to work together and accomplish something that they felt both the lighting for safety, and I didn't disagree, and the aesthetics would help, would help our businesses even earn more sales tax.
I, I, I understand that, but, but, but if, if we have other citizens' priorities that comes to fixing streets and promoting public safety, and that should take the priority, and I'm sorry, sir, but that is not gonna provide any light, it will, you know, fight...
We can respectfully disagree, but...
Well, we'll, we'll, we'll see if we go down there and turn the other ones off, and we'll see how much, uh, light it, uh, provides. It's gonna be nil. But the, uh, you know, the, the bottom line is, again, this is money that, that, in my mind, we, we are failing to prioritize the needs of citizens, and as I told some other people, you know, in tough times, people try and put food on the table, you know, if, if you got a hole in your roof, it's not wise to spend money going on vacation, and, and that's the analogy, I look at some of this stuff. We've got serious needs in this city, uh, the people want us to fight crime, we need a, you know, new police station, we need to find ways to put more police officers on the street, the people want the roads fixed, and every bit of the money that we can put towards this and allow those businesses, and I spoke to some businesses down there, that, uh, uh, they, they seem a little reluctant, uh, and fearful to speak, uh, publicly, but they certainly have told me that it's the city wants the license, these should pay for it, not them, and they feel their money would be best served if they were using it for advertising.
Okay.
Well, I know, and this is part of my work, I've talked this weekend to a bunch of the owners, and I, no one has said anything against everybody's part. I think sometimes this is, this, I don't wanna say twenty-five thousand is not much, but for what I think we would get back of bringing people into downtown, and the gentleman that spoke earlier but for what I think we would get back of bringing people into downtown and gentlemen that spoke earlier that said that, uh, people go to life, I think that's true, I mean, this is good, would great. We've seen, um, a massive revitalization of downtown, I mean, things are doing much better. When I moved back here in nineteen ninety four, I remember driving to Bellville thinking, my God, this town is dead. And it's not anything we're having.
And I agree with you, we took the gamble to spend the kind of money we did on the Streetscape. And, uh, and Alderman Hayden wasn't on the council at the time we made those decisions. But, but, you know, that could have been deemed as unnecessary too, but we did that. Alderman Holt, thanks, then, I'll leave you with that.
I would like to include everything that Alderman Hayden said, and I have visuals. We suppose we're taking today, every one of them is taking three blocks of Main Street within that seven block boundary. We're picking favorites here, we're basically, you mentioned the Streetscape already, we picked one kid of all of our kids that we had to take care of on the streets and said, you're the favorite, you get new shoes, you get a new outfit, and now with these lights, we're getting a new jewelry. A block away, we got this mess. It is unconscionable to ignore these problems and put up decorations.
We're, we're not ignoring them, I tell you, Alderman.
I have something against the street, I, it'd probably be very aesthetic, very, uh, you might do a good job with it. My problem is, I, I don't think the city needs to pay for it. I think it'd be, there, there could be a way to engage the businesses and public, I would be willing to contribute a little bit. I don't think I want to contribute to the city money.
Well, keep in mind though, TIP two is the businesses downtown, uh, that are, that are contributing with their taxes too. And, you know, I, I think the thing I've tried to say all along to the council when we look at things like this is you gotta have balance. Now, our sales taxes actually had several months this past year where it didn't do what it did the last couple of years where it held steady or went up. It's actually slipped a little bit the couple of months and it's kind of concerning. I think we do need to step out here and, and try a few things and not ignore the business community. I think we need to listen. I think that, uh, we've got a good thing going downtown, but if we can, if we can take it to the next level and a twenty five thousand dollar investment when somebody, two groups are meeting us halfway, I think that's a pretty good partnership. Now, can I guarantee you that it's going to raise sales tax? But I will guarantee you, if we do nothing and we only hire police, but are we only fight crime, we're not going to grow this city either. It has to be struck in balance. And I believe that the things that we've been doing the last nine years and I've been there, uh, we were gutsy. I stood up and, and the Streetscape was a tough project because it went way over budget. And I got a lot of criticism, but if we look at the Streetscape today, we've filled a lot of empty buildings. Sales tax has been up throughout the city, uh, and I think there's a good positive feeling about people wanting to be here. We have become a destination again. And it didn't happen by accident, it happened because of, of some committed Aldermen who were willing to make the tough votes. And, and I respect all of you who disagree tonight. And, you know, once we got our comments made, we'll put it to a vote and see where it goes. Alderman Concella.
I, I'd like to mention also that the, the merchants are putting up money.
Yep.
For instance, they are paying a special tax to pay off one point seven million dollars of that Streetscape. They also, Downtown Development is the fund for that, that tax money, and we're paying the bottom one. But also, twelve thousand five hundred is coming from Downtown Development, which is the owners of those properties, and from Main Street, which is merchants in town. So, yes, I'd like to point out that this is a share.
In, in the Main Street meeting, Jerry was unanimous vote, right?
It was unanimous vote and it was the largest, um, group of people that we had at a Main Street meeting since, you know, the last couple of years.
So I think that speaks, Alderman Snyder.
Oh, yes, I went through my packet, I have no pictures.
Okay, I apologize, there was no pictures, uh, I think...
But I mean, I think this is what the people needs, are they, is it going to be bright enough?
I mentioned, I mentioned it Finance, I believe you, I think you might have heard me. There's an example of these lights, I mentioned it to many of you who asked me. There's been an example put up, uh, at the, at the little bump out there in front of our store at two twenty seven East Main. And there's just a strand of them on those three light posts to kind of show the, the look of the light. It's an LED, it's a soft light, but it will, it will lighten the bump outs, it will create some more luminous downtown. And so safety is going to have some, uh, some potential benefit, but it's, it's aesthetics. And we're hoping that it gives the extra pop to help our businesses get the conversation going further about coming to downtown Bellville and spending some money.
I have the next question. If I understand right, the line, the lines are going to be drug across Main Street diagonally?
Well, that...
I mean, is that going to take away from the nice lights that we do have? I mean, the black lights down there are really nice.
You may not have heard, but at Finance, I mean, when we did the Streetscape, we bought lights specifically for this purpose with hooks on them and plugins at the top. So that when the day came that we were ready to try and go the next, the next distance with some, some new pop to downtown, that we were prepared to do it. So that the light poles we have are, are designed...
That's not what I'm saying, I'm saying what is it going to look like when you've got strings of lights going this way and this way?
There, there's a pattern to...
Is it, is it, what is, is it going to look like when you go down to the St. Clair County Fair and you see lines strung like this? Is this what we're going to be looking at or...
But we're going to, the, the, the lighting consultant and the engineers are, are, they have a design that they've sent to us. And, and I think it's, it's going to be in good taste and, and we're going to try it. And, and, uh, I, I'm not a lighting expert, but I think the additional lights, I believe, is another good way to try to help generate, it's our two hundred. I think it's a great year to do something like this, and I think it's great that these two groups are pitching in half of it. And, uh, you know, I, I would ask that we call for the vote and see how it falls. Alderman Hayden.
But again, you mentioned the design, and I understand, you know, things happen, you know, but even without my personal concerns, the fact that you provided with no information, I, I would have, it would force you to motion postpone or vote against because I have nothing, I have no design, I have no, nothing.
There's really no design that's been, it's going to, the lights are going to go...
You said, you just mentioned there was a design.
They have looked at it, but there's no, there's no pictures. They're just going to go, Jerry, my correct, the talk was to take them on those seven blocks and they're going to go basically...
They're just going to go one side of the street to the other, light to light to light to light. There is no design because the design has already been done with the, with the street lights already up. There is just light to light to light to light.
So, and the lights, the example are down there on Church Street, and we've mentioned that. And, and so, like I said, um, I, I understand...
I mean, but you don't believe that this body should have a concept of what this is going to look like before it's going to look like?
I don't think I can show you a concept until we put it up. We, we set an example of the strand that's down there on Church Street, and, and that was mentioned at Finance and for, at Downtown Redevelopment and at Main Street, so if you attend any of those meetings, it was a newspaper already from the paper that covered it. And, and certainly if you heard about, asked questions, if you, somebody would call me, I didn't get one call on it, I'd have been glad to go down there with them or talk about it further. But like I said, you know, I, I don't see the reason to postpone. If we get them ordered now, we can have them up by order of square.
Well, I didn't call you mayor, but the last time I sent you questions via email, you never responded.
That's not true, Alderman Hayden, we can talk about that after me, that, that, that's not true. Alderman Holt.
I'd like to offer a compromise, since it is a merchant who benefits and is definitely wanted, I propose that we loan them the twenty five thousand. Go ahead and order the lights, get them up in a timely manner and let them pass back the other half of it next year.
That's not the motion we have in Friday view, if you, uh, if you want to, um...
I amend the motion, I'll second it.
So you have a motion to, to approve putting them up and then make the merchants put them, pay them back?
It's their gift, uh, yeah, I think they should have mine.
No.
The city benefits by more tax dollars.
So we have a mo, okay, okay, okay. We have a motion by Alderman Holt, a second by Alderman Hayden, to deviate from the original motion and say that the city would forward the money and then build Main Street, is that what you're saying?
It's two groups that are playing...
To build the two groups and make them pay the rest. Okay, so we have a, you everybody understand, so if you vote for that, you're voting that the city does not participate and that then we have to take it back to those two groups and see if they're even willing to do that. But the agreement that they came to with us was asking us to participate with them. So if you vote yes for this, you're voting for Alderman Holt's, uh, uh, motion to, uh, to not approve it tonight. It really is going to be delayed, go back to committing and, and have to be rediscovered further. Yes, ma'am. We're going to, now, the first, the amendment would go first. The amendment would go first, so when I vote for this, is in favor of what Alderman Holt and Alderman Hayden are asking to not have the city pay anything, correct? Is that what, is that what's...
We'll pay the fifty percent upfront and then the thirty first.
Okay, a no vote would, would be against that proposal. Roll call.
Heisler.
No.
Concella.
No.
Holt.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Yeah.
Ridgewood.
No.
Anthony.
Nope.
Davidson.
No.
Sillsby.
No.
Hayden.
Aye.
Cybert.
No.
White.
Aye.
Galletti.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Uh, no. I'm sorry, I...
Your, your vote is what now, Mr. Mr. Musgrove, corrected, is your vote no or aye?
No.
Okay.
Orland.
Aye.
Snyder.
Aye.
What's the count?
Uh, nine six.
So the motion fails the amendment. We now have the original motion on the floor to pay the twenty five thousand dollars that we proposed be the city's share out of TIP two. Yes, ma'am.
Can we also talk about what this adds to our electric bill?
It's, it's extremely minimal and Main Street did say after they, uh, they're still researching it, but I think we got it down to, uh, Jerry, what was the last that Tom Bell told us?
He thinks it'll be twenty five cents per block per night.
And that, that, that wasn't sure if it included what the city's rate is for sure with the discount. So, and, and, uh, Main Street did say they would, we would check, watch the, we would watch the bill and they're willing to work with us on helping with that. That was a statement made from the very beginning.
I'm uncomfortable with vague statements, I have a dear contrast.
We have a motion and we have a second right now to, uh, approve the lighting as, as stated here in the motion, that the city would pay twenty five thousand and match the other two groups out of TIP two. Roll call.
Heisler.
Aye.
Concella.
Aye.
Holt.
No.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Ridgewood.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Davidson.
Aye.
Sillsby.
Aye.
Hayden.
No.
Cybert.
Aye.
White.
No.
Galletti.
No.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Orland.
No.
Snyder.
No.
Ayes have it, nine to six, motion carries. We move on. This time I would ask for a motion to approve five thousand dollars per year for the next five years, um, payment to the, um, Leadership Council as a pledge to help maintain Scott Air Force Base's presence. Uh, do I hear that motion? Alderman Schmidt making a motion, do I hear a second? Second by Alderman Cybert. Discussion. Alderman Hayden.
First question, first question, which, which, where do we lose on the agenda? Chairman Sillsby was making a motion for this committee and now we're in the process of, we've got a track there. That's, that's irrelevant, uh...
They're going to read them all.
This Leadership Council, your honor, can, can you give the public a little background of who these people are, what, what they do? Does that excuse your... He was just saying that he brought them, usually.
Okay.
The chairman normally makes the motions for this committee.
Okay, it came from Finance and I apologize, okay? There've been a lot of discussions here, uh, that long day. We have a motion, we do have a second. It did come from Finance though also, correct, Alderman Sillsby? And it was, uh, the vote was passed in Finance, I believe, was unanimous? So I believe it was unanimous and I, I erred on that, not many of them...
Can you explain this, this Leadership Council to the mayor?
The Leadership Council is made up of businesses and entities throughout southwestern Illinois. They fought together and worked together hard not only to promote business, but to be involved in nineteen ninety five and the two thousand five BRAC, there was two BRACs, somebody might correct me on that. Uh, I don't have the article in front of me. Uh, they came to my office several weeks ago and we knew this was coming, we heard about the mayor's meetings, we've heard about it in the paper, St. Clair County and Madison County each pledged, I think, fifty thousand initially, fifty thousand each, uh, to work together and to stand together in an effort to do everything we can as a region to make sure that we're ready on the offense to save Scott Air Force Base. As you read in the papers this weekend and most recently, uh, several different papers, um, there's not a BRAC today that's in line, but there are budget cuts for each and every military department that we have. Right now, Scott Air Force Base is not only the home to the Air Force, but it's, it's got, uh, Marines, Navy, and Army, all in transcount. We have to continue to, we have strengthened since the last BRAC. But you can't sit there and I, I agree with these folks and rest on your laurels. Bellville is the largest city in southern Illinois. When they came to me and asked me to take it to you folks and ask for consideration, um, I told them I would. At that time, there are a few cities and many of them were asking what is Bellville going to do? I believe it was Troy, Illinois, that pledged the twenty five hundred, I believe I read.
Yes.
Somebody can correct me if I'm wrong. But that was one of the only ones that spoke up at the time they were in my office a couple of weeks ago. I believe that it doesn't take a rocket scientist to figure out that Scott Air Force Base, we know, is about a four billion dollar annual economic engine to this region. Life without Scott Air Force Base is unimaginable. So for us to not step up to the plate and be a part of the plan and the solution and the, and the collaborative effort to do everything we can to grow that base, uh, I think would be, you know, a mistake.
So you can get us into the Leadership Council, who are, what are they going to do at the moment?
Well, they're going to, they're putting together, uh, a group right now and they're, they're using people, they're hiring people like Congressman Costello, retired four-star general Duncan McNabb, to help put together the plan with others to see how we can strengthen Scott Air Force Base and hopefully attract some more missions to Scott Air Force Base, what they're working on. But all these initiatives take money. You have to, yes, you have to hire people, you have to do studies, you have to be out there. There's trips back and forth to the Pentagon to get in there and try to, you gotta, uh, the, if you saw the paper one day in the last couple of days, the Secretary of, uh, the Air Force is coming to Scott on the twenty first, it's a couple of days. You know, it's, it's all of our duty to do everything we can to, uh, not only appreciate our military, but to, uh, not just to, you know, when there's, uh, uh, an issue going on around the world, uh, but to, to make sure that on a daily basis, we're paying attention and helping them. They're not, the military commanders are not allowed to go out and personally lobby. And they can't personally go out and tell their story and, and they, they, they have a protocol and an ethics that is very rigid. We, the community and the, and the political leaders and the citizens have the ability to come together united and, and, and stand up for our, our, the importance of this base to this region.
So they're not, they're not going to be lobbying at this?
Well, I won't, you know, you can, yeah, I mean, I'm not going to tell you...
I mean, who would they be lobbying and, I mean, it's...
They're going to be working with people.
They came lobbying the BRAC?
They're, they're going to be, no, there's not even a BRAC yet. But they're going to be working to help work on plans to bring more missions and strengthen this base.
I, I understand, but they, but they, I mean, the, the only people that you, you can lobby is, is a two senator or a congressman and I would surely hope that we don't have to lobby them to understand the importance.
But you understand, every other senator and congressman in every other part of the country that has an Air Force base or a military compound is all fighting for theirs as well.
Well, correct, I, I, I understand, but the, I, I, I've been struggling, so, so we don't know how many other communities know how many other communities are going to give money to-
I would hope all of them, and they're, and they're, and they're each different in size, but, you know, I think that Belleville being the largest city, I think, you know, I, I agree, twenty-five thousand dollars next five years also is a lot of money.
And, and what budget is that gonna-
Well, for this year, I stated that this year, since we kinda got, we'd already had the budget of several, that Jamie and I talked that we could probably take it out of marketing this year, and that comes from-
Well, the marketing fund is in the general fund, some, most of this is, right, Jamie?
There's probably a little bit too- This will all come out of general-
This will all come out of the general funds, uh, appropriately, it needs to. And then, next year, we can budget, you know, more accordingly. This year, they just came, you know, our draft of our budget was already in your hands weeks ago, uh, and they just came to my office not that many days back. I mean, sharply just a few days before the Finance meeting that we had. So, i- it's just that, you know, while I knew it was coming, I didn't know their timing, but I think that, uh, it's very important that we, uh, have this vote.
I, I did, uh, I, I struggled with this, uh, again, same, same issues that I brought up with the twenty-five thousand, with the lights. Um, the, uh, the, 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 the statement saving Scott Air Force Base, I, I think that is, is a misnomer. Uh, I don't believe Scott Air Force Base is even considered in the last BRAC. Uh, I do believe, after doing some independent research, and this is what's tipping me to, to support this, is the, if, if, if this leadership group can work with this group, I, I don't know who they're gonna lobby, but they can provide consulting to us on how we can work within our community, the other surrounding communities, to, to put the strategy together for what, a- a- and, and I read, uh, Executive Director Coen, Ms. Coen's statements of, of, of marketing, which, which there is certain categories in there that, uh, not only in the BRAC position, but as BRAC goes through, there's gonna be places that are gonna lose certain things that we can bring here. That was the balance, and then if you tell me that we're gonna be using it in that aspect, then I can support this.
I think we're gonna be using it in, in, in all of those aspects, all included. They're, they're working on a plan now to make sure that we're on the, the offensive, not on the defensive, trying to make sure that we can strengthen this base and not wait till we're in a fight to, to keep it, a fight to stay alive. And, and so, I think all the things you said, uh, many of them are, are all, different parts of them are all true. Alderman Holt.
When is Leadership Council done to specifically deal with the issue of charging funding tax on military?
I, I don't have the answer tonight. I don't have the answer now. Anyone else?
Your honor, if you look at the articles that we provided, of course, it's the one from the Democratic about the, the support, and it's talking about the Kansas City, I think, uh, area and so forth, I agree with Alderman Hayden in the fact that they can help us design what it is to show the local support. And it seems like in that article, that was the main thing that they were looking at and developing that, and I would think that that's what this group will do. They'll sit down and look at that and, and take an idea of what's gonna be taking place that can show that. Doesn't mean they're not gonna talk to a congressman, they're not gonna talk to other people, but hopefully the main thing that they'll be able to do is to show us what we can do as a community of this region to be able to say, it's a very much part of it, and we want Scott to grow.
That's right. And then, you know, Duncan McDad, McNabb just retired as the four-star general over Transcom. He at one time served as the four-star general over air mobility. This man is one of the most respected military minds, uh, in the country, and he feels, he would not have signed up to be a part of this team if he didn't have strong feelings about the mission of Scott Air Force Base and the potential of what we can do if we work together to sustain it. So, he is, and Congressman McNabb deserves equal credit because he fought with us for two rounds of BRAC, and he's been there in the trenches. So, I, I think we're very fortunate to have them, uh, leading this team, them and many others, and I, I think it's the right thing to do, and if it wouldn't be, I would be asking you if it's, you know, if it was unethical or anything else. I think it's our duty that we as the, you know, if you go back to nineteen seventeen, the city of Belleville is the one that sold the property to Scott Air Force Base, and we signed the charter. We're, we're, we have a direct correlation and a relationship, uh, almost a hundred years now, and the Bell Scott Committee is sixty-four years of continuous partnership with that base, and I think it's only appropriate that we stand up and that we are one of the first ones to any of, to be a part of this effort. So, I feel very good about the, the vote here tonight and what we're asking. So, with that, I'd ask for a roll call vote. Heisler.
Aye.
Kinsella.
Aye.
Holt.
No.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Ridgewood.
Aye.
Randall, I'm sorry, Anthony.
Aye.
Davidson.
Aye.
Sillsby.
Aye.
Hayden.
Aye.
Cybert.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Galletti.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Orland.
Aye.
Snyder.
No.
Motion carries. Uh, I guess that would be what? Thirteen-two, I heard. Thirteen-two. Okay. We move on. Let me do that last adjustment here, and we're down to E. Alderman Sillsby.
Your honor, on behalf of the, uh, special meeting of the Finance Committee, I make a motion to approve insurance renewals as follows. Insurance Program Managers Group, IPMG, as a health insurance third-party administrator, including their recommendations for stop-loss and aggravated carriers, and Vannika for dental and vision coverage, extended life, or life insurance coverage, so we'll-
Motion by Alderman Sillsby, second by Alderman Hayden. Any discussion on this? Roll call. Heisler.
Aye.
Kinsella.
Aye.
Holt.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Ridgewood.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Davidson.
Aye.
Sillsby.
Aye.
Hayden.
Aye.
Cybert.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Galletti.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Orland.
Aye.
Snyder. Motion carries. Um, I'd ask for a motion to amend the development agreement with Hubbard Construction, Inc., for the remodeling of the facility located at one oh seven West Main Street. Uh, the amendment consists solely of the extension of the project completion date from April two thousand fourteen to July two thousand fourteen. All other aspects of the agreement will remain irrelevant. This was just to adjust the timeline so that Dave continued to be eligible for the overall sales tax on business material. Motion by Alderman Schmidt, give your word, second by Alderman Sillsby. Any discussion? Yes, ma'am?
Um, we don't have a copy of the agreement in our package. We do have a copy of the agreement from Howard Concrete, um, company, and that's out at the Val Valley, two industrial park. How come we don't have a copy? She, she may have took the wrong one, I apologize for that. Well, then, we can't, I mean, this is what I was brought, this is what I have been complaining and have brought up numerous times. We're just agreeing to these contracts, we don't need the-
Alderman Snyder, when did you donate this? Did you have this weekend when you read the package? I wish you'd have called. I didn't catch you.
I, I sent you an email about, um, actually, that I was asking about all these contracts, and you sent me back an email stating that you would like for me to give all of them to you in advance.
I asked you specifically, I asked you, there was party, there was party agreements-
That's just it, we have party agreements.
And, and you know what? There's only four of them. There's only four of them, and we're gonna address this because Eric's not here tonight, but I got a complete little report we're putting together, and you will all get. You, you, you started that greatly. Uh, but this year, this, this year-
No, it's, it's the truth. All these agreed, no, I, I have four.
This tonight, you can vote against this, but if we don't-
Well, no, it's a business here in town that deserves-
That's right, and there, I'm under a timeline, it runs out, when, when does it run out?
What business is this?
April first. It's the business that's being developed going into the old Egyptian stationery. They're working hard, their timeline, like everything, when you're in construction, sometimes it just doesn't, you just don't have the dates right, and they probably should have put-
Yeah, it's great chance.
It's Attorney's Office, yeah.
It's not Egyptian stationery that's doing the work.
Alderman Sillsby has the floor.
Just, I have no problem not having any backup, so you don't need any change of dates. I mean, we don't need the whole contract.
And you approved the whole contract, you know?
I, I'm fine with it.
So, we have a motion and a second, right, to approve the extension of time only. Nothing else changes in the contract, it just gives them the chance to execute their, um, timeline on the abatement of sales tax on some of their products.
Okay, but I have the floor, and I didn't yield. Um, this is what I'm saying. Not only tonight, we get Howard, uh, concrete company.
That has to be a mistake by the clerical lady in Economic Development.
I tell you what happened, their files, one behind another, because Howard and Hubbard are, we mentioned on an outlet order, so she pulled the wrong one, and I apologize about that. If you would have let me know this weekend, I would have kept copies on your desk tonight. I apologize. You didn't reread what you said now?
We reread it several times, but what happened was, when Carrie went to make the copies, I guess, somehow she pulled the wrong one. We knew what was going in there. Eric prepared it, you know, he, but, you know, it was a mistake, you know, and, and that's all I can say. Eric, Emily's apologizing, I'm apologizing, but it's very simple. We're asking to amend the date. Okay? Roll call. Uh, Mr. White, I'm sorry.
I just had one just to say, I found that anytime I have a problem with anything that's concerning, it's, it's coming toward a council, like, and Emily, or, or, or anybody's office, but if I give them notice, I will get answers. I never have problems.
I, I, thank you. Thank you very much. Roll call vote. Heisler.
Aye.
Kinsella.
Aye.
Holt.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Ridgewood.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Davidson.
Aye.
Sillsby.
Aye.
Hayden.
Aye.
Cybert.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Galletti.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Orland.
Aye.
Snyder.
Aye.
Motion carries. Your extension is granted. Uh, we now move down to, boy, you're losing track. Gee, oh, we got, we got three solicitor licenses in a row. If I could ask the clerk to read them, would you agree to go ahead and vote on them together?
Yes.
Okay. Would you mind reading those?
Sir, gee, solicitor license request for Serena L. Hagan to solicit cable phone and internet through Charter Communications. H is solicitor license request for Robert E. Sims, Sr., to solicit cable phone and internet through Charter Communications. And I have solicitor license request for Regina D. Gordon to solicit cable phone and internet through Charter Communications.
Do I hear a motion to approve these three licenses? Motion by Alderman Schmidt, do I hear a second? Second. Second by Alderman Anthony. Any discussion?
Can you, um, can you tell what the nature of this listing is, is it going door-to-door or is it for calls?
Yeah, it's door-to-door, that's why we have to have the, yeah, yes, sir, Eric's here.
Yeah, uh, it is door, it is door-to-door sales. I'm best part, and I'm a supervisor for this group. Um, store-to-door sales. Uh, we've been doing it in the area for the past, I would say, five years, and it just came to our attention about two, about three weeks ago that we actually needed a permit in Belleville, and that's why we're applying for now, going to the proper channel. But we have been doing it, and it's, the, the people we employ live in this area. Everybody that, that, we only hire people that live in the area they work in, and we're, this is the first of three. We're having a total of nine for the Bell, the greater Belleville area, uh, shoot, it goes all the way from Belleville down to Mount Vernon, all the way down south to Columbia, Illinois. So, uh, it's something that's going to be a benefit to, to nine people, yeah, that live in this area that are employed here.
Have these, have these people been doing this already?
Yeah, I, in, in certain, in other areas. They were doing in Belleville up until last month, until we found out that we needed a permit, then I pulled them out, um, and we're waiting for this.
They got their background checks done.
How often you, uh, have, have they been working for you?
I've worked for Charter for five years.
Oh, these three have been working for you?
Uh, Serena Hagan's been working here about a little over a year. Regina Gordon's been in the cable industry for seven. Robert Sims has been here about seven, eight months. And everyone goes through the extensive background check before they even get hired through Charter.
And we do a background check on them?
Absolutely.
So, we have a motion, and we have a second. All in favor of approving these three solicitors' license, signify by saying aye. Aye. opposed?
No.
Roll call vote. Heisler.
No.
Kinsella.
Aye.
Holt.
No.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Ridgewood.
Aye.
Randall. Anthony, I'm sorry.
Aye.
Davidson.
No.
Sillsby.
Aye.
Hayden.
Aye.
Cybert.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Galletti.
No.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Orland.
Aye.
Snyder.
No.
You got ten-five. Motion carries. Communications.
All right, A, request to approve a street ban permit for the barbershop Harmony Show to be displayed.
Is there any objections? We're gonna read them as a group. Go ahead.
All right, A, request to approve a street ban permit for the barbershop Harmony Show to be displayed at the North Illinois Straight Entrance to the City. B, request from Get Up and Go Biathlon Race Community to hold their Get Up and Go Biathlon, starting and finishing at Belleville West High School utilizing city, county, and state roadways on August thirty-first, two thousand fourteen. C, request from Belleville School District number one eighteen to hold their annual school parade on Monday, May twelfth, two thousand fourteen, range date of May thirteenth, two thousand fourteen. D, request from the City of Belleville Car Show Committee asking to conduct a car cruise between six and nine p.m. on the following weekends in two thousand fourteen, June fourteenth, July twelfth, August ninth, and September thirteenth. The cruise will take place on West Main Street Blocks one, two, and three, and on First and Second Streets in those areas, and a long extent from the square where West Main meets the square to the Firestone Building on Third and West Main. E, communication from Adapt for Autism requesting permission to decorate all downtown light posts with blue ribbons from April first to April thirty, two thousand fourteen to support Autism Awareness Month. F, request from Kathleen Lind, our Director of Belleville Autism, to have the second and third blocks of East Main street closed on April twenty-second, two thousand fourteen from five-thirty p.m. to seven-thirty p.m. for the sold-out premiere of Belleville, the movie.
Motion to approve, question twelve, eight, three, round. Aye. Motion by Alderman Hayden, second by Alderman Cybert, to approve those communications that just read. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Petitions, we have none. Resolution, I'd ask for a motion to read by title only, Resolution thirty-one seventy-six. Motion by Alderman Sillsby, second by Alderman Schmidt. Any discussion about reading by title only? All in favor by reading by title only, signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed?
A, Resolution number thirty-one seventy-six, a resolution requesting permission from I God to close Route one fifty-nine for the Greater Belleville Chamber of Commerce Chili Cookoff from five p.m. Thursday, October second, two thousand fourteen, to twelve a.m. Sunday, October fifth, two thousand fourteen.
Motion to approve Resolution number thirty-one seventy-six.
Motion by Alderman Sillsby, second by Alderman Cybert. Discussion? Roll call. Heisler.
Aye.
Kinsella.
Aye.
Holt.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Ridgewood.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Davidson.
Aye.
Sillsby.
Aye.
Hayden.
Aye.
Cybert.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Galletti.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Orland.
Aye.
Snyder.
Aye.
Motion carries. I ask for a motion to read by title only, margins seventy-seven fifty-four, seventy-seven fifty-five, seventy-seven fifty-six, seventy-seven fifty-seven, and seventy-seven fifty-eight.
Seven.
Motion by Alderman Sillsby, second by Alderman Schmidt. Any discussion? To read by title only? Is there a problem with reading these by as a group, since we, anybody, by title only and as a group? All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
A, ordinance number seventy-seven fifty-four, zoning ordinance regarding case six, February Show to be displayed.
Is there any objections?
I'd like to read them all.
We're gonna read them as a group.
Go ahead.
All right, A, request to approve a street banner permit for the barbershop Harmony
Show to be displayed.
All right, A, request to approve a street banner permit for the barbershop Harmony Show to be displayed at North Illinois Street entrance to the city. B, request from Get Up and Go by Athlon race community to hold their Get Up and Go
by Athlon, starting and finishing at Belleville West High School utilizing city, county, and state roadways on August thirty-first, two thousand fourteen. C, request from Belleville School District number one eighteen to hold their annual school parade on Monday, May twelfth, two thousand fourteen, rain date of May thirteenth, two thousand fourteen. D, request from the City of Belleville Car Show Committee asking to conduct a car cruise between six and nine P.M. on the following weekends in two thousand fourteen, June fourteenth, July twelfth, August ninth, and September thirteenth. The cruise will take place on West Main Street blocks one, two, and three, and on First and Second Streets in those areas, and it will extend from the square where West Main meets the square to the Firestone Building on Third and West Main. E, communication from Adapt for Autism requesting permission to decorate all downtown light posts with blue ribbons from April first to April thirty, two thousand fourteen, to support Autism Awareness Month. F, request from Kathleen Lindauer, Director of Belleville Illinois Tourism, to have the second and third blocks of East Main, street closed on April twenty-second, two thousand fourteen, from five-thirty P.M. to seven-thirty P.M. for the sold-out premiere of Belleville with a movie.
Motion to approve, much well, thank you. Okay. Motion by Alderman Hayden, second by Alderman Cybert, to approve those communications that just read. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close. Motion carries. Petitions, we have non-resolution, I'd ask for a motion to read by title only, Resolution thirty-one seventy-six. Motion by Alderman Sillsby, second by Alderman Schmidt. Any discussion? Roll call.
Heisler.
Aye.
Kinsella.
Aye.
Holt.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Ridgewood.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Davidson.
Aye.
Sillsby.
Aye.
Hayden.
Aye.
Cybert.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Galletti.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Orland.
Aye.
Snyder.
Aye.
Motion carries, is there any objections?
I'm sorry, what's that?
TV. TV, I called Mr. Gibb today, when he talked to, I think I sent him around, did you give the email I sent last week? It says about a week, ten days away or something like that, I have to probably, I talked to